Welcome and thank you all for coming to the special city council meeting of Tuesday, March 22. I would like, for purposes of the record, to announce that we have already finished litigation and minutes in our first executive session and will not need a second executive session at the close of this meeting. First agenda item is public comments. What? What do you want, Ron? Well, we did it. And first, we have Jim Hughes. Ah, here are more people. David Matusek and Richard Halsted are the first speakers. If you would come up by the microphone and give your name and address, and you each have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Tizel, members of the council. My name is Jim Hughes. I live at 2518 Hartsel Street. As we all review the budget options, it'd be most helpful to have data about the performance of city departments and functions. This data would include, for example, the cost per unit of services performed, like expenses for planting a new tree. It'd be presented in timeline fashion so the trends in costs and revenues could be observed. It would be compared with similar measures from similar communities in the Chicago area. It would be compared with data from private service contracts that perform the same function. In this example, landscaping and forestry service contracts, both here in Evanston and in nearby communities. In the case of facilities and programs, the data would include number of users, both expense and revenue generated by program or facility, and data about patron usage trends. With this data, improper choices can be avoided. With this data, we can also avoid politicization of issues. I feel as incumbent upon the council to set the standards for an informed public to participate meaningfully in budget decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dave Matusek. I work, I guess, recycling now for the city of Evanston. I sit here in disbelief that the council would consider further privatization of services in this city. Groot has already added $675,000 because of a bad counting error. How is it you have $675,000 for a private company but you would not have that money for us? We ran three trucks for the first two weeks of the season and the last four weeks during yard waste season where we had three full timers and three to five seasonals. And the other five months, we ran two trucks with two full timers and two to three seasonals. It would have been cheaper for you to let us to get back, or take back the yard waste contract. If you just go by pure man hours, the fact that Groot makes more money than we do and they're using more trucks, they're going to be using four. We never used more than three. I just want to know who and where are you getting your numbers from that you're basing your decisions on? And now the street department is using 10 main crews to deliver cans for a private scavenger. 400 man hours a week for 10 weeks is the estimate. Your cost with fuel and man hours is $140,000 to $150,000 and 4,000 man hours, just so Groot can have new cans to dump. Meanwhile, who's fixing our streets and our potholes when our crews are delivering cans? I called the can maker and I talked to an individual who no longer works there, but he said an additional cost of $4.50 per can would have been added if they would have done the delivery themselves. 15,000 cans at $4.50 comes to $67,500 and it would have taken them four to five weeks. Faster, cheaper, and freeing up 4,000 man hours. Whose brilliant idea was it they had the city workers deliver these cans? Again, where are you getting your numbers from? So please don't tell me that you're going to use the same people to base your decision on further privatization. One move, one move has already cost you $750,000, 4,000 man hours. Can you afford to listen to these individuals anymore? Everyone here, including the residents of Evanston, should stop looking at the employees as your cost problem and just be focusing on those who are in charge of making the decisions, who are miscalculating and basically showing incompetence. We are forced to execute the things that our managers say, and many times, it's against our own will. Thank you.
How many minutes do I have? Three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. Well, my name is Richard Halsted, and I'm the founder and director of the Halsted School of Portrait and Figure Art, which is a tenant at the Noyes Cultural Arts Center. I'm concerned about the future of the Noyes Center, obviously because of my involvement there. And I do understand the, well, not all the complexities, but I understand that the budgetary problems are complex. And I know that the need for a new roof at the Noyes Center complicates that a little bit more. As I understand it, the general maintenance of the building is paid for by the tenants' rent, and you can correct me if I'm wrong about that. I hope, well, I'm sure you're taking that into consideration, but I'm hoping that you also take into consideration, when you look at the center, that all of the activities generated there are funded by the artists and the arts organizations themselves. That's something that shouldn't be overlooked. The center provides very reasonable rent, and in exchange, these individuals and groups provide an extremely high level of artistic and cultural activities and opportunities for relatively little money. This isn't immediately apparent because when budgets are studied, they are normally focused on the tangible or the visible dollars that can be traced going in and out of the treasury. And little attention is given to the dollars that are not being spent or the dollar value of a service that is not being paid for. If the latter is not taken into account, though, we run the risk of losing something extremely valuable, which we probably would never be able to retrieve at a later date. Two of the tenants, Light Opera Works and Piven Theater Workshop, have been both, have both been talking about leaving the Noyes Center, which I think would be a shame. There are various reasons that they give, but I think the major part of it is the ongoing uncertainty about the continuation of the center. These are big deal tenants who raise lots of money in operating costs that fuel the engines that create really legitimate theater. They both have full-time staff members. Light Opera has seven, and Piven has five, and they both hire lots and lots of private contractors who are actors, costume and set designers, stage managers, and probably carpenters, electricians, and so on. Piven also hires 10 to 20 teachers. Both of them have expenses that go way beyond that in supplies and equipment and so on. There are lots of expenses there, paid for by the income from their performances and money they raise through private donations. None of this comes from the city budget.
Mr. Halsted, I need you to wrap it up soon, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, that's essentially what I wanted to talk about. Evanston is unique and the Noyes Center is uniquely innovative as a system that works in a way that is mutually beneficial for both. These are unique times, and the people at Noyes have, as they've had for a long time, the skills to make money stretch and work for them so that the enriching effects of the arts can continue in our community. Now, I have one other really important paragraph here. For those of you who weren't here or don't remember that far back, private contributions raised by private citizens paid for half the renovations of the former Noyes School so that it could be made functional as a cultural arts center. They did this with the trust that it would be perpetuated by future generations. When you consider this commitment and the love for the arts in Evanston and combine that with how economically self-sustaining the activities within Noyes Center really are, a new roof every 10 or 15 years might seem reasonable and attainable. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next is Lonnie Wilson, Kevin O'Connor, Laura Allen Simpson, and Uv Russell.
Avi Russell.
Avi Russell.
Well, hello. My name's Lonnie Wilson. I live at 1039 Darrow and Evanston, Illinois. What I want to talk about is really, you know, it's twofold. One is, the way we set priorities has put us in this mess. Past mayors and councils like yourself have made decisions on priorities that have either cost us money or not cost us money. And as we, because we know that the city of Evanston is in a tight place right now, and something's going to get cut. But I hope that you, the council here, thinks about people before things, programs before things. We do a great job of having a really, really pretty picture of a community, but there's some real pain down to the bottom. And when you guys cut programs that affect people on the lower end of the spectrum, you end up paying in another way. Either you have to give the chief more money to arrest and try to arrest your way out of social ills, or you do something that, in the end, costs you money. So as you start to make these priorities and set these priorities this year, I hope you really, 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 for the first time in my 55 years, hopefully you think really hard on every decision and every cut you make that has something to do with people.
Good evening. Kevin O'Connor, 1227 and a half, Isabella. Well, here we are again, another budget cycle. The more one understands about how Evanston got bankrupt, the less one forgives. Last budget, during the second citizen input session, keeping the branch libraries open was the number-one vote getter from those that attended that meeting. By not adding money to the library budget before giving the budget to the library board, this council effectively closed the South Branch after 91 years. Shame on you. For Evanston's green ordinance, this council changed the ordinance at the first hint of opposition from a potential business. So naturally, it begs the question as to will this council again continue to ignore community priorities while pretending that they're important? Budget priorities. Tomorrow night, the Economic Development Committee is potentially giving away $18,500 for a blade sign for the Hilton Garden Hotel. I'm sorry, but this council couldn't find $57,000 for the library's South Branch but potentially gives a private corporation $18,500 for a sign. How screwed up are our priorities? Spending money, especially taxpayers' money, must be fun, I guess. However, we're broke. Please stop the privatization of profit and the socialization of risk. Thank you.
Hi, Laura Allen here, Laura Allen Simpson. I'm glad that others have done their homework on the budget because I can't speak to that or to how you're spending your money, but I can speak to what drew us to Evanston as a community. And it's unique to my husband and I because it is a vibrant city, and it has culture, and it has everything that Chicago has but on a smaller scale. Whereas other communities on the North Shore are really bedroom communities. They really shut down at 5:00 or 6:00, and you don't find the cultural life that you find in Evanston. So when you think about cutting places like the Robert Crown Center and the Noyes Cultural Center and the building that is EAC, you're also really diminishing the value of your community to people who are very independent, income, you know, good young professionals who may not have kids and may want to spend their money locally, may want to go to places like the Noyes Cultural Center to augment their lives. I go to the Noyes Cultural Center as an artist. I study with Richard Halsted. It's a place that is unlike any other I have ever found, and it creates a sense of community for the people who attend it. That can't be minimized either because that sense of community forms bonds that form neighborhoods within neighborhoods. It's like the dog walkers. We all know each other. The people who are in this artist community, we all know each other too, and we would hate to be disbanded. So when you think about Evanston and these cultural places, don't just think about them as buildings that you have to pay money for. Think of them as the vibrant magnetic pull that gets good quality people into your community who have the money to fund your restaurants, to fund the local businesses, and to really make your city a place people want to live. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Evie Russell. I live at 1724 Livingston Street in Evanston. Let me start by reading from an online article published by the city of Evanston itself. The Noyes Cultural Arts Center is a unique model of a community's commitment to art as a vital social, historical, and economic component of the rich fabric called the community. And then the article ends by saying, "The Noyes Cultural Arts Center has gained national attention for its innovative approach to bringing first-rate arts programming to a community and has played a pivotal role in Evanston becoming the city of the arts. More importantly, however, the Noyes Cultural Arts Center is a leader in making a vital component of the fabric of life for all Evanstonians." Also, let me quote from Mr. Bob Kewitz on March 21st. He says, "This financial situation is against the backdrop of the need to reinvest and reinvigorate the most important services we provide rather than see status quo or deterioration of them." In view of the various things that you are saying, how can you even consider putting in danger the continuity of a cultural institution as a Noyes Cultural Arts Center? Besides being a burn-hem building and, on historical building, it serves the community in many ways. The businesses around the center really get a lot of dollars from the various people who work in that building on a daily basis. You can ask them. I have been starting, two weeks ago, collecting signatures in a petition not to close the building, and I've done it very relaxed way, just going upstairs and downstairs a few times a day. I haven't started investigating what the people of Evanston would say or the businesses, and I've already collected almost 300 signatures in support. And what was amazing is that I didn't have to explain anything to anybody or convince them to sign. They flocked to me to sign and wanted to actually expand to the community. A lot of people don't realize what the Noyes Cultural Arts Center has. At this present moment, it has five theaters, as it was mentioned before, two of them quite important in terms of monetary gain for the community. It has individual studios, individual instruction from singing to painting to sculpture. The Evanston Arts Center has its classes there, some of them. It has a gallery that is open to the public, and the Park District uses also the facility in the summer and, I think, also at the times of the year. This is, there was a movement, as was mentioned before, in the 1980s to save this place, and there will be again a movement to save this place if it comes to that. You will see people being quite upset if there is talk about closing this place. So you should think about what you do, especially in terms of, for example, there is a project that I've heard that might be considered about bringing a performance art center on the lakefront. You already have a performance art center. Put some money into it, fix it up. People come to the Noyes Cultural Arts Center as far away as Indiana.
Russell, I need you to wrap it up, please.
People come to this town who are not residents to subsidize the arts and spend the dollars here. So find it out before you do any plans.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes, Madam Mayor, there has been a rumor circulating throughout the community regarding the closing of Chandler, Noyes, and the Ecology Center. And I think before we go on that we should have some statement made by the city manager regarding those rumors.
City manager.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I think that the discussion about those facilities, Alderman Rainey, started from a newspaper article that appeared in the Evanston Roundtable about a month ago, and I believe the source of that was a discussion that I had with the board at the Evanston Environment Association. That is the group, as you all know, that is very supportive of the Ecology Center. And I, during that discussion, and I was invited to attend their meeting to talk very broadly about the future of the Ecology Center and what we, the challenges we are facing as a community moving forward in 2012 and beyond. At that meeting, I indicated to the environment board that I thought there would remain challenges for all of our facilities, and I believe, I named those very facilities during the course of that. And I said, "We are going to need, as a city and certainly as a city manager, I would be bringing to the city council options to look at for those facilities." I don't believe I said the word "close." I think I said the word "look at options." And as you will hear through my presentation this evening, that is what I'm recommending, to look at options. I'm not recommending this evening to close any facility, to contract out any job, but we are facing serious financial problems as a community, and that's why we're here tonight. And I'm asking the council to begin a process to help us identify the best ways to manage through that for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2012.
Thank you. Next, Joanna Pinsky, Linda Slank, Irene Gregory, and Lori Keenan.
Hi, I'm Joanna Pinsky, and I do thank you, Alderman and Mayor, for giving us this opportunity to talk. I'm the, I live at 1223 Grant Street in Evanston, and I am the artistic director of Art Encounter, which is a 30-year-old nonprofit art education organization. We have been in the Noyes Center probably for 25 years. We measure a society by its art. Art stimulates the imagination and critical thinking. It helps us consider who we are, understand who we were, and dream about the future, what we can become. The Noyes Center serves the community by providing classes, which is a start in art for children and adults. It brings people from Evanston and Chicago and beyond to enjoy theater, art exhibits, musical programs. And I have to say that there's an energy that develops after school as children come, and they're singing in one room, they're creating art in another, another place, they're acting, they're learning theatrical gymnastics in still another room. And it's just wonderful. There's a vitality. It's important to a city to have art. And the vitality comes not just from having individual centers, but from this one center where everybody is sharing the excitement and invention together. Noyes works as an incubation center for music, art, dance, and theater, that, programs that take place in Evanston and the greater Chicago area. It's stimulating to be in an art environment and to share ideas with the artists in different fields. I found the climate of working at the Noyes Center to be invaluable. We have brought groups ranging from elementary and high school students, the general public, the elderly, and artists to see top-notch art exhibits that are organized by the Evanston Arts Center in the building. I also lead a critique group for artists who look forward to exhibiting their work, and they bring people in from all over. And it spreads. Everybody comes to see the different exhibits. We annually conduct a program called Linking Generations. It's occurring right now that brings together the elderly in Evanston, or older active Evanston adults actually, with high school students. And they have a show every year in the Arts Center and where they present their work. And again, art here, we use art as a way of building community and breaking down barriers between ages as well as barriers between ethnic groups. The location of the Noyes Center has been very important too, since it's right near the L. I think the Noyes Center has stimulated the local businesses. And the building, originally a school, while not a landmark, was designed by Daniel Burnham. I think it's quite beautiful, and it would be a great loss if the city doesn't support its continuation. So I hope in some way that, that it can.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Linda Slavic. I'm at 1319 Greenwood Street in Evanston. I'm a board member of Actors Gymnasium. We're also a tenant of Noyes Cultural Center, and I'm proud to say we have a waiting list for our summer camp there, and we sold out our last 10 shows at Actors Gym. We just hit a four-week run. So we're hardworking and successful. I'm also a member of a vocal parent advocacy group for fine arts at Evanston High School because I believe in arts for everyone. Evanston's a diverse, eclectic town that has a long history of support of cultural arts through numerous arts festivals, cultural centers, and a strong fine arts component in our public schools. Our cultural arts centers have some of the best, most innovative arts programs in the Chicagoland area, and I would argue, in the nation. I would urge city council to continue to prioritize the arts by maintaining and financially supporting Noyes Cultural Arts Center and the organizations therein. The arts are part of the unique fabric that is Evanston. I didn't grow up here, my husband did, but it certainly attracted me to want to stay here and raise my daughter here. It's what helps our community thrive, and it definitely defines us in the most powerful, wonderful way. Let's all continue this amazing legacy. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Irene Gregory, 1900 Sherman Avenue. Seven or eight months of the year, I actually live over in James Park in the community garden. And, you know, Evanston is the tree city. We've been a tree city for years, and as a result of that, we have lots of leaves. And the leaves evidently have become a problem. But you know, everyone with a tree who has to rake up the leaves can pitch in and become a solution to this because instead of putting them in the big brown bags, you put them in a big, black, plastic bag. And the rest of the recipe is, you put one or two cups of water in there, you seal it up real tight, you put it, hopefully, in a sunny place, and next year, you're going to have leaf mold or compost, which is like black gold. You can improve your soil for your vegetables, your flowers, your grass, and do the city a big favor, and everybody can pitch in. So I bring you this opportunity, and I hope you'll grab it.
Thank you very much.
My name is Lori Keenan. I live at 2214 Colfax Street. I'm here tonight wearing two hats. The first is for the Evanston Public Library Friends, which will open on Saturday, the 26th, the mighty twig, which is sort of stand-in for the closed South Branch Library, which stood in that location for nearly 100 years. The mighty twig, a twig certainly smaller than a branch, but mighty. We hope that the community will come out on Saturday. We hope that the community will come out on Saturday and join in the fun. The library branch, or the twig, will be completely on the honor system and run by volunteers, so we hope you'll stop by. The second reason I'm here tonight is as a citizen. I warn my fellow citizens of Evanston, when we're talking about community priorities, I stood, sat in this room for a year last year with a priority that was very compelling to the, the community of Evanston. In fact, we went to a similar meeting where we all got to vote on our priorities, and this was the vote for the branch libraries and the libraries in Evanston. I'm going to pass this down so the council can see it. Within 24 hours of that vote, Mr. Bob Kritz, who likes to say that these are just ideas he's floating or possibly rumors, then proposed to cut the branch libraries. So I warn you tonight, when you are making community priorities something that this council should hear and this city manager should hear, that they are paying attention to you. Because it may just be a rumor right now about Robert Crown, or the Art Center, or whatever else you all come here for months and months on end to, to fight for and to try to save because it's a community priority. These things are already in motion. I warn you, it happened to us, it will happen to you. So tomorrow night, when we consider giving the Hilton Corporation $18,000, I'd like you to look at the Blackstone Group, which owns the Hilton Corporation, which has $100 billion in assets, including the Hilton, and is giving their executives a 12% increase in compensation, that this city and this community has different priorities than perhaps this council and this city manager. Thank you.
That concludes public comment. City Manager.
Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Once again, good evening. We're here this evening to talk about budget planning for the fiscal year that will begin on January 1, 2012. I've been doing local government management for 22 years, and this is the first time I've come to a city council nine months in advance to start talking about a budget. And I think the speakers this evening have really set a very good backdrop for these discussions. As you know, the city council has made nearly $13 million in cuts today versus the budget that was adopted by the city council for fiscal year 2008, 2009. All of these cuts have been difficult, but I do not believe have had a substantial impact on the services we provide our residents or their quality of life. However, as we look toward 2012 and 2013, I believe that the city will continue to have deficits in the range of $1.5 to $2 million just to continue status quo. That is not to reinvest, that is not to refund, that is not to reinvigorate. That is deficits just to continue doing exactly what we're doing today. I believe there are no further service reductions that can be made in this community that will not significantly impact the services we provide and the quality of life of our residents. As you've heard this evening, and I absolutely agree, that Evanston is a special place, and maintaining a high level of quality-of-life services is a cornerstone of this city. I believe, however, we must look realistically at what are the most important services we provide and make sure that these services are provided at the most exceptional level possible. For those services and programs we cannot deliver at that level, I believe it's appropriate to look to others to provide the service. The city has already raised property taxes for pension costs the last several years, with no additional portion of the property tax going to general fund operations. I believe the city does not have the luxury to further increase the property tax, or really any other taxes, without increasing flight of residents and businesses from Evanston and making taxes an even more significant barrier to residents and businesses locating here. Keeping and enhancing the current mix of residents and mix of businesses is critical to the future of Evanston. As has been said, this financial situation is against a backdrop of the need to reinvest and reinvigorate. It's important that we continue arts programs. It's important that we continue programs for our seniors. It's important that we continue programs for our youth. And we need to invest in them. We also need to invest in important programs, like provided by the Evanston Police Department and the Evanston Fire Department. In order to do that, we need to continue to make investments in critical quality-of-life infrastructure as well. And that's something that we've not talked about, which I'd like to talk a little bit about this evening, is that this infrastructure, the streets of the city of Evanston, the parks of the city of Evanston, and the public facilities of the city of Evanston need improvement. But we do not have the luxury to continue issuing general obligation debt, which we're already challenged to pay off over $100 million in order to continue to do that. I believe that part of the solution for funding our capital needs is to shift some of our annual operating funds to capital projects as a permanent change in city spending. We've talked a little bit already from the speakers about what makes us unique. And certainly, there are many built-in advantages here in Evanston, and we need to continue to embrace them. The lakefront, our location to the city of Chicago, our location both on the Metro and CTA lines, and our location near Northwestern University are also built-in advantages. And as communities look at what their strengths are, we have another unique strength that has been coined by an urbanist named Joel Conklin, and that is the three-generation burb. And what's a three-generation burb? Well, a three-generation burb is a community that not only has young adults and students as we have, it's not only a community that has families that we have, but it's also a community that has retirees. And though having those three things with our location, I think, is really among our strengths. So in order for us to move forward, what are the kinds of things I think we need to invest in? We need to continue to invest in economic development. We have not done as good a job over the last many years as we probably should have. And as we're now coming out of that recession, I think you're, you're seeing a new, reinvigorated approach for economic development in this community. We need people to continue to want to have businesses here. We want them to locate businesses here. We want visitors to come here, visitors who will pay hotel tax and revenue, visitors that will eat at our restaurants and shop at our stores. So that is very important in the area of economic development. Something that doesn't always get talked about at these workshops is the strengths of our quality of life, and two of those strengths are the Evanston Police Department and the Evanston Fire Department. Thirty-nine percent of our budget goes to support the Evanston Police Department and the Evanston Fire Department. The Evanston Fire Department recently had its class rating increased or reduced, however you'd like to look at it, which means lower property insurance and fire insurance rates for our residents, and the Evanston Police Department has, year after year, having a decrease in crime. These things are important to our community, but they're also very expensive, and we need to continue to have funding for that. In the areas of affordable housing, we've been making some great strides there, but the mix of this community is so important. And as I've, as your city manager heard, all of you say, and I'm a member of this community, that we don't want gentrification so only the richest of people live in Evanston. We need to keep that mix. And in order to keep that mix, I believe, things need to remain affordable, not only through city services, but through taxes. And as you've heard again from the speakers tonight, things like the arts, things like our commitment to sustainability, our commitments to youth and adult recreation, that's what makes Evanston Evanston. And as we're challenged with financial challenges, we need to be mindful that all of these programs also have a cost, and how do we best balance that? So what I'd like to do this evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, is to lay out a plan for some decision-making for the council between now and the end of November, when we'll ask the council to adopt a fiscal year 2012 budget. Let me reiterate that no decisions have been made. There are no lists of people, no list of facilities, but a dialogue must begin. Dialogue is extraordinarily important in this community, and I hope that we can say that tonight is the beginning of that dialogue, so that by the end of November, we will have a solution to deal with our, our budget challenges. So specifically this evening, I'd like to do an overview of our general fund revenue and expenditure projections, talk about our infrastructure and capital needs, and outline some of the next steps, which I think are important for the council's consideration. As we look at revenue projections, certainly, the state of Illinois, the United States is still in an uncertain level of what we've done. And let me take this opportunity to commend Joelle and Earl, the Director of Administrative Services, Brandon Dieter, and, and Lou Gertis. The three of them, along with Marty Lyons, our Assistant City Manager, have done an excellent job, and, and all of the hard work that you're seeing on these slides is there, so I want to thank them right off the bat for that work. But as we look at what revenue growth likely will be in 2012 and 2013, we're going to assume 2% growth, and you can see various indicators that hopefully support that, that estimate. If you look at our property tax growth, this is the net levy of property tax, and you can see from 2006 to a projection in 2012, a significant growth. Now, this is the net levy, all of the money that is levied through the property tax. We also have a slide here that shows the general fund portion of the levy. And that has, you know, pretty much come back to levels, we think will be back to levels of '06, '07, so that's very positive. But again, going back to that net levy, the council over the last couple of years has made adjustments in the property tax that have not supported operations. Those adjustments in the property tax have only supported our police and fire pensions. And this council has talked a lot about police and fire pensions. The men and women of the police department and the fire department deserve the pensions that they have earned, but those costs are significant to us and cannot be ignored. Sales tax, again, we're, we're looking at, you know, revenue projections, about $1 million for 2012, less than what we saw in '07, '08. There's two bars, there's the estate tax in green, and the home rule tax, the additional increment that the city of Evanston adds to the sales tax that gives you a sense of where we are there. Our state share of income tax, again, has certainly decreased from '07, '08. And again, in all of these slides, you'll notice that the fiscal year 11 budget's a little bit less, and that's because that is a 10-month budget, not a 12-month budget. So as you look there, we're looking at the normative lines there on the income tax. This, of course, has also set a backdrop of our, our friends and colleagues in the General Assembly in the state of Illinois. They have a piece of this income tax. We get our share of income tax through the graces of the Illinois General Assembly. And there have been initiatives announced as recently as this week by the governor and the leaders in the legislature to take away as much as 30% of what you see here. So if the state legislature were to take 30% away from $5.5 million, that again increases our deficit, and they would do that in order to help balance the state of Illinois budget. Our utility tax dollars, again, significant decreases there. Our real estate transfer tax, I think those graphs speak for themselves. Building permits, again, we've, we've hopefully seen some leveling there. The liquor tax, this is also a, an economic development issue. Many business owners who sell liquor have come to us and said that our, our current tax level is a burden and is an economic disincentive for them to expand their businesses here. It's a disincentive for businesses to locate here, and so that is an issue that we need to continue to be mindful of as well. And this slide shows our recreation program charges. Certainly, many of the programs we provide through our Department of Parks, Recreation, and Community Services bring in revenue, and this gives you a sense of, of where we are with that. So that's on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, we're assuming increases in our general pension obligations through the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, increases to health insurance. We're also looking at general salary growth. Now, general salary growth has many components to it.
Excuse me, City Manager, Alderman Burris has a question.
Just before we head to expenditures, I was just going to ask about the recreation program charges. And why are we dropping down from 49, I mean, 4.9 million in, with the actual in FY10? I'm ignoring FY11 because it's a 10-month budget. So why would we drop down almost $200,000 for fiscal year 12? When it'll be the same amount of time. I'm just wondering.
Mrs. Earl is here.
Actually, Doug pointed out to me, it is an error on our part, and I didn't even realize it because we added this slide afterwards. We should have done the 2% on last year's. So the actual last two bars will probably do a 2% increase over the 4.9.
So it'll be more flat than anything else.
Right, thanks, I just.
Yes, so, so that it was, everything else reflects that, but we did add this at the last minute, and we didn't realize that we, we did the growth on this year as opposed to, it should have been on last year.
Well, it's an error in our favor. That's a good thing. Thanks.
Yes, Alderman Rainey.
Are we certain that error wasn't made on any of the other projections, or expenditures, or revenues?
Let's hope it was.
And.
I don't know.
Madam Mayor, Alderman Rainey, we have worked on these slides. This presentation was pretty much completed a week ago. There are, what, three or four slides that have been added since that time. That was one of those three or four, so I'm fairly confident with the numbers you're seeing here. Spenditure projections, again, we're talking about general salary growth. There's growth in salary by steps, so most of that, 1%, comes from that. We have labor agreements with all of our bargaining units. They are all up on December 31, 2011, so any additional salary increases beyond that general salary growth are not calculated here. This gives you a sense of our general fund expenditures. 58% of what we spend in the general fund is based on salaries, 19% benefits, 23% non-personal services, contracts, materials and supplies, miscellaneous program expenses. Our staffing since 1980 to 2010, just to give you a sense of that, has decreased from 856.1 full-time equivalents to 797 full-time equivalents in 2010. Gives you a graphical representation of that. Our expenditures, again, as I mentioned, 61% are non-public safety, 39% are public safety, non-public safety expenditures, again, over the course of the last several years, with the 2011 being the 10-month budget. Public safety expenditures, tracking perhaps just a little bit higher than the rest on an average basis. The general fund summary then showing the difference between revenue and expenditures in '09, '10, a fairly significant difference. And then looking to this year balanced, and then the next two years, seeing expenditures exceeding revenues. Again, more of an overview, again, staff has decreased by 10% since '06, '07. We're looking at revenue projections that are increasing about 2%, expenditures increasing by 4%. Therefore, we are projecting at this early date in budget preparation, a $1.4 million budget deficit to fund the status quo for 2012, and a $3.2 million deficit to fund this status quo in 2013. So that's on the operating side. Let's talk a little bit on the capital side. Again, the council's familiar of our, of our funding sources. For most of our, our general projects, there is money that we, we gain every year from the issuance of general obligation bonds, monies that is carried over from previous years, and then other funding sources from our utilities, the state motor vehicle tax fund, and other sources. I want to talk a little bit about where we stand with capital needs in the community. These are all images you are familiar with. First and foremost, our residential streets and the smaller commercial streets, I think, are in a shape that is not commensurate with other qualities of life issues in the city of Evanston. The, the total cost to improve those streets is in the tens of millions of dollars, money we currently do not have. There's other infrastructure issues throughout the community. This gives you a look on the interior of the Salt Dome, which is located at the Service Center. It's been a capital project that's been discussed by the council for several years. We'll be coming back to it over the next couple of months, hoping to move that forward. Our rolling stock with Fleet is, is a very challenging look to see that we are putting our hard-working men and women of this organization in facility, in vehicles that look like Infrastructure and Parks, Recreation, and Community Services, from parking lots to beachfront issues, to playground equipment, to athletic surfaces, to fencing, to gazebos, to wall damage, to outdated, deteriorated outdoor furniture, to duck work and interior beam work, to HVAC, to chimneys, to deteriorated walls at the Noyes Center, electrical systems at the Crown Center, deterioration at the Ecology Center. at the Crown Center, deterioration at the Ecology Center, chimneys at fire stations, the erosion of the, of the hill that you do not sled on at James Park, the window damage at the Lakefront Art Center. Many people, I think, are confused about the status of the buildings at the Lighthouse Landing. Two of those buildings, including the Lighthouse, are maintained through a, a park district. The remainder of those buildings are maintained by the city of Evanston. And those buildings are in definite need of repair at the Lighthouse Landing area. Lakefront lagoon issues, Latimer Eden Path, parking light poles, roofing issues, the foghouse at the, at the Lighthouse Landing area. So clearly our needs are pretty great. And if you look at what we have spent in recent years, it's been a pretty modest amount. Those projections then in 2012, 13, 14 really show deferred capital spending. So over the two years, 12 and 13, there's, you know, over $50 million. So that's about the average of about five years of what we have been spending in, in capital needs. This slide's a very interesting one. This shows the amount of debt that we have issued from 2002 on for capital projects. There's a high in 2002 of $16.6 million to this year, which is not quite the lowest in the time frame, but pretty close to $6.5 million. We have over $100 million in capital budget debt we have no way to pay back. Over $100 million of capital budget debt that we have no way to pay back. Our fleet needs, again, very flat over a period of time, about $2 million a year. Deferred costs there over a two-year period, nearly $20 million, add another $10 million almost a year there. We, we need to come to grips with not only the number of vehicles we have in our fleet, but how we maintain them, how we pay for them, are there options to deal with that? So capital needs from other sources, these are the non-general fund needs, so this is other streets, this is the utility department, water and sewer. Again, big numbers, $20 million plus in the near term, you know, 16, 15 million as we go further out. All funds all taken together, a $58 million need for '12. We don't have the money to do that, certainly. $45 million the following year, $38 million the year after that. So where do we stand with the general fund? Again, a million four for 2012, 3.2 million in 2013. Madam Mayor, members of the council, one of the policy questions that I would like to pose to you as we move forward with 2012 is a major one, and that is to shift operating funds from operations to capital so that we have additional money to invest in capital projects that is not based on debt. And I'm recommending that we look at $2 million a year, starting in fiscal year 2012. So that $2 million, in addition to the structural operating deficit of a million four, would take us to $3.4 million in 2012 and $5.2 million in 2013. Again, the general obligation debt load at $111,233,000. I think there are limited opportunities to continue that. Certainly, other agencies here in Illinois and throughout the country are finding there is not the appetite for municipal bonds that there once was. Ratings are going down and the cost of issuance is going up for local governments. So therefore, that $2 million, I think, is a prudent goal, beginning next year, to cut from our operating expenses to invest in capital projects. So how do we do all this? I'm proposing to the council this evening, really a five-step plan over the next several months to, to do that. Some of this is information gathering, working with the community, hopefully all to bring a, a set of issues to you in the late summer, go back out to the community in the early fall, and then present a budget to you in, in October. The first is community services comparison. I think as we look to make adjustments to the services we provide our residents, it's informative to look at other comparable cities, not only here in Illinois, but also in other parts of the country, to see what they're doing. Not only to economize for efficiency, but to look at the breadth and depth of their services. The Illinois comparable cities, Skokie, Arlington Heights, Oak Park and Schaumburg, all cities here in the greater Chicago area, which you're all familiar with, about the same size. Skokie nearby, Arlington Heights and Schaumburg, definitely different communities, but certainly of similar size and full service as we are. I'm also proposing that we look more closely at the city of Champaign, Illinois. Champaign hosts the University of Illinois, so there are many similarities of communities there. But I also felt it was important that we look at communities outside of, of Illinois and look at communities around the country. And I'm proposing we look at Ann Arbor, Michigan, Berkeley, California, Cambridge, Massachusetts, New Haven, Connecticut and Rockville, Maryland. Again, communities similar to ours, some are council-manager government, some are not, to just get a sense of their order of magnitude. What are the percentages of what they're spending on, on, on different quality of life issues? And to see if there is information that would inform the community and city council discussions. So staff is proposing that we would move forward with sort of an, an information search and data collection of these communities. Issues of performance measurement was raised by one of the speakers to look and see the performance measures of those communities. And again, to see if, if there are things to be learned from looking at these other communities. Next, I believe we need to look at potential efficiencies. Regardless if a, if a, if a program is, is, even if it is viewed as being important, are we providing that program or service in the most cost-effective way possible? And I think we need to look at issues of contracting in services. Are there services we can provide to other government agencies that we are already providing through city forces? I think we need to look seriously at contracting out services. I do not believe that every service provided by the city of Evanston is, can be contracted out. But I think we owe it to ourselves and owe it to this community to think closely about what services could be contracted out, what portions of services could be contracted out. And at least gather the data to understand what the issues are. If it makes sense for Evanston, then we should pursue it. If it doesn't make sense for Evanston, we shouldn't. In the area of partnerships, again, looking at what we can do with neighboring communities. The, the council at your last meeting approved the first of, what I hope will be many new purchasing agreements with multiple jurisdictions here in, in northern Illinois for crack sealing of all things. So we got a, a dollar amount that was much smaller by pooling not only the work that we would have, but the work of other neighboring communities. So are there other ways we can partner with neighboring communities for the provision of services, for the purchase of goods and services? Also, can we look at partners throughout the Evanston community to help us provide specific municipal services? We are not the only agency in Evanston that does art programs. We're not the only agency in Evanston that does youth programs. There are many partners out there. And would it make sense for us to pursue partnerships, to look at providing services in a more cost-effective manner? And then finally, I believe the council will need to look at the elimination of some services. Everything is important. And when everything is important, it's very difficult to eliminate services. We're also proposing this evening that we would go through a process to try to assign some relative value to the services we provide the residents of Evanston. And that's a very slippery slope and I absolutely understand that. But I believe we are at a point where every service is important. And when you're at a point where every service is important, there needs to be some objective way to measure those services. Next is the area of capital planning. I don't know that we've done a great job on that as, as a community over the last several years. And we need to do a better job. And part of that is identifying non-debt money for regular ongoing maintenance as well as capital improvements, the, the construction of new facilities. And I'm proposing, again, a $2 million shift from the operating fund to, to the capital infrastructure. I think over time, as revenues grow, I think it's important that the council look at earmarking increased funding from certain cap, from certain sources for capital needs. This could include growth in the gasoline tax to go to streets, growth in other revenues such as sales tax. So that would be hopefully something we can talk about. The council, through the last budget, considered a debt management policy. I think that's another critical element with capital planning. I think it's important that we consider the sale of some capital assets. Again, it would need to make sense for the community and the city. And not every asset we have would make sense even to begin to consider. But I think that there should be some framework that would allow us to look at how we could sell capital assets. And then finally, consider privatization of capital assets. Are there, are there properties that if we did not sell, that we could enter into agreements with third parties to operate for us? And would those, and would that be an opportunity to continue to provide the service in a cost-efficient manner? The next piece is priority-based budgeting. And I'm proposing to the council this evening that we begin a process of evaluating every service that the city of Evanston provides. And evaluating those services based on a framework of already identified goals and priorities by this city council and by the community. The city council has adopted 13 goals, and they're there on the screen, that you have said are the most important things we do as a community. So of the services we provide, where do those services fit among the city council's goals? I believe another measure that could be used to evaluate is the strategic plan that was adopted by the city on March 27th, 2006. That strategic plan has a variety of goals to them, and I've made copies available for you, you pack it, and the, the document is widely available online as well. But that strategic plan has a number of, of areas and goals, and there's, they're divided up by vision. The first is the area of economic viability, the next is environmental sustainability, strengthening community, and that's that. So these goals, there are six strategic views, there are 13 goals. What we've done is we've looked at what other communities have tried to do. And we're proposing that we take a model that we found and tweak it a little bit, but would still allow us to evaluate every single program that we have. So follow me as this starts to get a little complicated. The first exercise, I think, would be important, is to take the goals from the strategic plan and ask the community, if you have $100, how would you spread that $100 among the strategic goals of the city? On the screen here is a, an illustrative example from another community that's not our strategic goals, they're the strategic goals of someone else, other community. But to, to get a sense, sort of a, a benchmark for context, I think it'd be very interesting to see, where does the community think among those broad areas of the strategic plan, we should be investing our resources? The second piece of this, then, would to do, would to develop a city services and program inventory. This would be identifying each city service by program, identifying the cost associated with that program, identifying the revenue associated with that program, and providing the information about the details of that program. One of the things we heard during the budget, community budget process for the budget that began on March 1st, was that we did not do that. And it was very difficult for people to assess priorities without enough information. So part of this would be to provide that kind of information for every service and program we provide in the city. Next, we would take those programs and services and assign a value to them based on three factors. Based on a factor called the, the basic program attribute, basically how does this fit in the overall scheme of what we do as a city? The second would be, how does this compare to the city, city strategic plan? Does this program or service further the goals of the city's strategic plan areas? And then finally, does the program or service further one of the city council's goals? And the scale that we are borrowing from another community was a scale from zero to four. I think maybe if we can just focus on one category from this other community, the, the program was downtown management. And so the first area to be evaluated was, is the community mandated to provide the program? The second area is what kind of cost recovery is there for that program? The third area is a change in demand for the services, is this something that we're seeing the community ask for more and more? And then the last area is the reliance on the city to provide the service. If we weren't, are we the only ones that can provide it? If we didn't provide it, what would be the impacts? And to rank those each on a one to four scale. Then under the priority results, again, looking at the program and comparing it to each of the city's strategic plan goals on a one to four scale. And then also to compare the program, does it help further any of the city council's current goals? And from that, each program would be assigned a numeric number. This is something that the staff would take on to put together and then present to you and the community in sort of a ranked order based on these measures. So the, the, we'll talk about format in a second, but we would make that information available, the community would talk about that. And then quite honestly, I think we would look at those programs and services that were ranked lower than others for issues of potential elimination. Lastly, the area of innovation. This is a really smart community. The people are smart, the residents are smart, and we need to continue to use the ideas that are generated by our residents as much as we practically can. This list is a list that came out of the community budget workshops this past year. All issues I think you're all familiar with, but we have to look at innovation. And this is not just a matter of, of doing the same thing, the same way, over and over. We have to look at efficiencies, we have to look at priorities, but we also have to look at innovative ways to address these issues. So I'm proposing the following way to do this. We're now in the latter part of March, that in the, the month of April, we would, would try this whole idea of an online community prioritization survey, to take the, to take the areas of the strategic plan and ask the residents, if you have $100, how would you spend the $100 among those prioritization areas? We would also have a community planning session in late April, early May, to get feedback on all of this. This is a lot to take in and I think it's important that, for anyone who's interested, that we talk some more about this and get whatever assistance ideas one of the speakers tonight, for example, talked about, including performance measures, which I think is a great idea for each of the programs and services, how much information we should gather to have a template that everyone can agree upon. We would then come back to you at a special city council meeting on Monday, May the 16th, to summarize the community planning session feedback, to summarize the online survey results, and to share with you the initial list of programs and services that we would divide. We have a program budget now, this is not going to be a huge stretch for us to identify those programs and services. But before we then spend the balance of the spring and summer gathering data on every one, we want the council to take a look at the list, if there are things you feel that should not be pursued for reductions, should not be pursued for additional data, we'd like to know that. If you think everything's fair game, great. And then we'll go ahead and do that from May 16th up until the city council's single-scheduled meeting in the month of August. Then at that meeting, we would come to you with a report with our findings on the comparable communities. We would come back to you with the detailed list of all of the programs, their costs, all the information that we would be gathering about them, and then also the scores that we would come up with. We would then also have a better general fund deficit estimate. So if the council's in agreement to take the deficit number plus $2 million, and let's say it's $3.5 million, we would propose to the council at that point that we would come up with $7 million of potential budget reduction. So twice the number that's needed, which is about what we've been doing the last two years. And take that list of, take that number and then take the list of program elements and go back to the community. And go to the community and say, this is the deficit we think we have, here are the programs, here are their costs, and get feedback from them as to, and try to come up with a consensus dollar amount as to how to make up that deficit. That would occur online through August with community in-person meetings through the month of September, with our goal of submitting to you a budget on October 7th, having budget workshops through the balance of October into November, as has been the, was the case this past year. This is a big undertaking. We want. We want to have an opportunity for the council to have maximum input, we want the community to have maximum input. One of the things I think we learned from the budget process last year was a frustration that there was not enough information. And so that really was the first kernel of an idea that led us to develop the plan that we presented this evening, was to develop the maximum amount of information about every one of our programs and services, so not only is the council fully informed, but our residents are fully informed of what that is. I think if we are able to cover our deficit number, if we're able to look at making additional investments in capital, I think that allows us to start turning the corner, and also then to begin having the conversation about reinvestment in services and programs, because we need to start reinvesting in those programs. We've talked a lot about the Noyce Cultural Arts Center, that's a great example. It's a wonderful program in a building that has tremendous capital needs. How do we balance, over a long period of time, being able to support programs that are in facilities that have tremendous capital needs? How are we able to balance, again, all of the wonderful services we provide with the real issues of budget deficits? And how do we then find money on top of that to reinvest in those programs? I think the plan that I've outlined this evening is, our steps in that direction, we look forward to your thoughts and suggestions.
Thank you. I'm looking for lights. Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As Mr. O'Connor said, here we go again, it's another budget cycle. It feels as if every season is budget season now, that we don't have an off-season. And like in my house with kids playing sports, there's really no off-season. But I also think that we'll all acknowledge that the budget is, consideration of our budget has been part of every decision that we make during the year, in one way or another, that it's in our minds. So I'm, I think I like this process for this year. I really like the idea of using data and analysis to figure out which programs work for us, which work for our residents, to do some real analysis of which programs are effective, and then which ones the community thinks are the higher priorities. I hope that the community will work with us on this, that they'll look at the numbers with us, they'll crunch the data, they'll also see the big picture and understand how their interests fit into a larger picture of the budget, and evaluate with us perhaps some even better ideas that might come from outside of Evanston. I think there's potential there. So here we are, just a few months since we wrapped up our last budget discussion, undertaking it again, and I hope that this is the budget program, the process, that will bring more of our residents to the table to help us divine what the community's values are and how they should be reflected in the budget.
Alderman Holmes.
I too like the process and the proposal for this year. I'm just concerned about the online survey in terms of how then do we reach those who may not have access? And also, one of the things that concerns me all of the time is, how do we get those who have no voice, who don't speak, who have just no way of getting this kind of information and being able to voice where they are? So I guess maybe my thought, city manager, is that if you and the staff could push a little bit harder in terms of being innovative, to try to figure out a way how we can reach some of those citizens, that we would be able to get some of their input. Certainly, some of us can do it with our board meetings and that kind of thing, but there's still a whole nother population out there that you'll hear from after things are done. And I think sometimes that's how we get all the rumors and the rumbling. And if we could figure out a way to sort of get them involved in the beginning, it would be wonderful.
And Madam Mayor, Alderman Holmes, Alderman Holmes was very helpful when we've done, I've done now two budgets, and Alderman raised that issue at the very first one, and we've, I think, had a lot of success with some full-page advertisements in the local newspapers, and I would want to continue that. So any survey, perhaps it would make sense for us to do an advertisement with this information we presented this evening, but also then to do, any kind of survey would also be in the newspaper, people could clip out. We also have the ability for people to call 311. And so if people would like to participate, they could call 311 and say, I'd like to complete the survey, and we'll have our 311 operators able to do that. So I think we can do that, that way, we can have paper surveys out, we would just ask people to, you know, name and address and whatnot, just so that we could try to avoid duplication. But I think we have a nice print media, as well as a good online media here in Evanston, and we'll use both.
Seeing no lights, I'd like to take this opportunity to say that I've had many conversations about how to keep the Noyce Cultural Arts Center open and how to deliver services there even better than we currently do. I have had no conversations about closing the Noyce Cultural Arts Center at all. The same is true of the Ecology Center and of Robert Crown, and I have not discussed Does anyone else have any comments on the budget?
So then, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we'll move forward with the plan as presented. We'd ask that the council schedule a special meeting in April to get an update. We will have a community meeting between now and then. We'll make information available online and information available in the print media.
Is there a motion to adjourn? City Clerk?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Wath.
Aye.
And Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Nine to nothing, we are adjourned.